Start.
That was cool.
Okay, right.
Liam knows not to prepare.
Okay, I'm gonna just open now that we're ready for meeting anyway. Good evening, everybody. You're gonna mix things up a bit and executive session in the beginning of our meeting for a minute. So I'm gonna open or enter into an executive session and then we're gonna return to our public meeting after this. If my spiel. As the chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members of the persons anticipated on the agenda are present at the square meeting. School committee members, if I can call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Alboya?
Yes.
Mary Bradley? Yes. Lori Griffiths?
Yes, but it's very echoey.
It's a big room, can't do much about them.
Okay. It's different than other weeks. And you're not echoing, Colleen, but Natasha is.
It is better.
Maybe. Let us know. Let me see when you keep talking.
Open, um, Maureen, I think I look. Yes, and oh, and Robert Bridge. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen and Roddy?
Here.
Brian Haas?
Here.
Lee White?
Here.
How we doing?
Good, that's better.
Okay, I'll do my best. All right. This, uh, the meeting of the mayors, they conducted as a private meeting as followed as by chapter two of the Act of twenty twenty three, signed as above by Governor Healy on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. This act continues with vision under the minimum that the March, February first, twenty twenty five. The school, uh, the committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured, but which is audible to and viewed by the public. If you're planning to record broadcasting, please raise your hand.
Oh, hold on. Yeah, I know.
Okay. And you're myself. Oh, you know, when you kind of logged in, you pressed the join my sound, I bet that's what it was. Okay, um, all right, nobody's raising their hand. Meeting materials, please follow along through the website under the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three agenda of the comments. And as you know, I'm gonna be that hard when we actually get back to public comments because we're not at public comments right now. So I need to pick up on my spiel at the comment section. And right now I want to go ahead and open the meeting via roll call. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Mary Bradley?
Yes.
Mara Hogan?
Yeah.
Josh Rivera? Yes. Okay, and now.
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry. See when you're in my screen right? Sorry. And this, okay. Executive session, uh, we're going to enter into the executive session under MGL, chapter thirty A, section two one eight two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-English persons. Since open people have a detrimental effect to the marketing, the funding, and the chairs for the players. We will reconvene and open session approximately ten minutes. Enter into executive session via roll call, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Okay. Donna?
Yes.
Mary Bradley? Yes. Mara Hogan? Yes. Natasha Rivera? Yes. All right, we can pause the recording. Great. Everybody. We are just regrouping from our executive session. And I'm going to pick up from the spiel of our, the beginning of the public comments section. So the public comments, uh, agenda is devoted time to school committee to hear the public, hear the public asset structure primarily supports a unidirectional reporting of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for any person wishing to speak, make a public comment during a virtual meeting. I do so by signing up to speak at bay of public comments agenda I have through the lead. Please have your Zoom match so that we may be able to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair as time allows. Chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to the topic at hand, to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Email public comments in advance. And it's also possible up until the agenda item at comments for SC at mayor dot U twelve dot FA dot US. You must state the subject line for the comments and include your first and last name and town to ensure your comments can be read. Comments for the chair will only be read in three minutes. If the comments, submitted comments are longer, they'll be cut off at three minutes. To ensure comments are able to be read in their entirety, it suggests that attempt to approximately three hundred and fifty minutes. Sorry. I just said a first good, three hundred and fifty words.
That's a good, right? Don't be rude.
However. However, they come longer than three hundred and fifty words included in the record in their entirety. Know anyone can submit comments in the, uh, comments for public record after the public comment agenda has passed by providing an email to comments for SC at mayor dot U twelve dot FA dot US up until the end of the meeting, specifically sending their comments to be included. And then we can ground rules, we go on. I will introduce speakers. They, uh, after they conclude, we will, we will ask each member, have any comments, questions, or motions that we'd like to make. I'll go with the members for additional comments. Or questions if time allows, please, while speaking, it's your name is called, remember, speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate events. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt them speaking. Finally, to vote, take it, and this meeting will be conducted via roll call of votes. And, um, that's, okay. Now we will find back to agenda. Public comments. We have white. Public comments. By, oh, yeah, it's the folder. Yeah. Okay. Right? So I will read this for the committee and then I'll see if anyone has any comments that we can ask to rhetoric in the audience. This, this was sent on by Senor Saler. Dear school committee, last week, um, for the first time in two years, I have served the mayor fear and the people opportunity to sit and chat with our superintendent, Brian Haas, and write will be here. Ritual, a state interview. I can't begin to express how relieved I was for that opportunity. And I assure you, I was not. It's not often that we get the chance to dive deep into a live conversation about our current employee experience, our accomplishments, challenges, and frustrations. During this half hour conversation, Mr. Haas was an active listener, interested in what I had to say and share. I felt valued and an important member of the Maynard Public Schools. I know that running our schools is complex and challenging. It takes commitment, determination, empathy, trust, and even vision, just to mention of you. This is a task that at times feels very daunting. And because so many things happen at the same time, there are so many moving pieces. It feels like we're always on the field, but we're trying to check in on each other. But the opportunity to sit down and chat with Brian was refreshing and welcomed. Welcome change to usual business as usual, which I want to say, Brian Haas for his enthusiasm, dedication, and efforts to build trust and safety for all stakeholders in the major schools. Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you, Lori, of murdering about. I want to see if we have, see if you guys raised, right? Paula? First lucky two, so I think we are good here, we'll move on. So, Ronnie? Yeah, yeah. Oh, you're a coward.
This week.
Spreadable. Sale?
Yes. The tag is one of the, this year's. So we were able to purchase our standard. Of course, yes. What that, of that, of that, if it over, but it's a whole unused multiple generation sitting in storage. The goal is to clear the storage space and Mr. Ariela wanted to run a sale that will be important to making the sale of the student staff and the rest of the Maynard community. The cost of the item for great, we did ten dollars at the point of sale. The red office, um, he would love to start this Monday, May birthday, beginning of the school year. Using resources availability would advertise the sale to many people throughout the time possible. Even it's a younger students, non-athletes, non-athletes staff, like just these items as they can show internet or sports, athletic events of this. And to place directly back into the apartment and purchase either that buddy, and here. The fundraiser is the first choice of action with the and thinking did for donating, but it seemed not feel worthwhile action, seeing as the uniforms are all we made them in. Thus rendering them useless for other than Maynard event. After the sale was ended, he was donate the left over that are still in acceptable shape to the nonprofit or charitable organization, where it's those of the rest. This is a consultation with myself, we need the policy.
Yeah, so it's great. I think from a procedural perspective, we, uh, we need to vote, I guess, the rate, because we said the rate, so it's a school on race or that we just gave three, ten dollars. That's, um, and, and I think that, you know, everybody has any questions? With story, you have any questions?
You know, I mean, I'm curious about how old they are. In excess of the word generations. And what I've seen, I think they could be many, many years old, some of them, when even the ones lean better than I have since a student, and some of them have been formed for pretty on that part, like, I don't know, but they're still together, so like, but like, you know, like. Which is why we've got new ones. It's what time well has, we're fortunate to be able to do that. And now it's a matter of creating space, so they could be, you know, ten seasons.
Don't forget, um, if we put them towards the textiles, give like some money, I don't know, like, yes, if you put, put the leftovers in, in the plan A, uh, the school get a percent of the weight of that here and that.
That's a very, very small check. I've been, um.
Yeah. Yeah, one, every, you know, still takers. Um, the idea is to get it outside of, like, sixty, seventy, eighty year old people. You know, somebody might be like. Yeah.
Go look at the banner and find another giving warm and they have, as I keep on there.
Mary, don't you have? No chance? Great, Mark. Okay, so then, I'm there, so I just wanted to, you know, they have a great reason, this is a great idea, and I it's a bad excuse, but, uh, I agree, I'll to approve the recommendation. Yeah. Sir. Setting the, uh, setting the, uh, the rates for the cost of sale items between three dollars and ten dollars, um, as provided. Something. Any discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Kimberly Griffiths?
Yes.
Elizabeth Alboya?
Yes.
Mary Bradley? Yes. Mara Hogan? Yes. Natasha Rivera? Yes. And who will she carries? Hillary, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, laugh, yeah, I heard this go in, I'm sorry. Sorry, feel bad.
I don't know what you're saying sorry for, but it's okay.
All right.
I still only hear like thirty percent.
I'll try to speak even louder, um, if I can. Maybe it's just my voice.
It's, it's, today's worse than normal, so I'm not sure.
All right, um, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll try to keep, continue to speak up. Uh, student representative, Liam. How you doing?
I'm doing good, um.
You might need to, here.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay, we do.
Stand here.
Whatever, whatever seems.
Hi, everyone, so, um, very busy, you be extended away, uh, the Disney trip went out last week over at like the, like, Saturday, Sunday, but then, and they have a lot of fun over there. And I think the better, better is obviously bucks, really, to purchase, but yeah, they, they, they it's like April four in front of one of our, to get it to me. Cause they get to go to like workshop where they got like, like, personal action, it's all, let me see. I think it'd be a field like that, April four, like, like, outside city. I think it's great experience for, I hope that, I don't know how you guys are, uh, or do, but I think that.
Every year, and I know it's been for a while, um, to, to spend it for, hoping for, just to the first. Yeah.
Um, to the second international conference happening, although, and your first time in the United States, which admittedly is only like basically, uh, we've been at the international conference, and there are one, they've gone here, we're very proud of, in the future, then, or I know Ada and said it was a very powerful experience, I think, but it's like sixty seven, the country, it's kind of a, or, it's a, it's a, be awesome. But we didn't have any, but it's the first.
It, this is one hundred and sixty.
Yeah, so that's, that's great. Good job. Good job.
First time, can we?
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna be, you're scared, this is hard. And you also met a lot of, it's like, really, a lot of the people that, that have, I was on COVID, alright, I'm eighty, so like eighty people, yeah. Six. Um, for our students, I'm sorry, I'm
Oh, well, I, I think we're, yeah. Yeah.
There was some people that you or stuff, but.
That's okay, we will listen to the parts that are not, yeah. Sorry.
Excellent. It's how, yeah, anyway, um, we're doing the students' spotlight and we're visiting, uh, student project, or this group want to think about NHS service coordinator happening, like, as kind of a birthday session. So we're, and, and our organizing, a, so I pick up, just, we, 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 that's a student, okay? And they're basically gonna be, I'm gonna be like, such a challenge, I think the first one's gonna be, which behind schools, second one's gonna be downtown, and third one's and it's gonna be like, that, I think, uh, no. And I think it's just great that, yes, it's all, yeah, that's why we say, it's only once. Um, for concerns, yeah, two. The first one is the centers are gonna be installed in several areas, high school, and that's the, they then, especially most COVID, they, they, it's, uh, one of the worst fall, the high school, because a lot of that will happen if it was and it also, what they, the situation, it's worse. Like, not a repression, maybe, but what they have to, what they're, like, sociable figure about. So we're gonna, so, 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 in like, the doesn't ever, also, like, China, like, on the, it's, 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 it's not, well, it isn't, it's not like that, it's not the same, that, like. And it, but it's just a way to discourage it, and like, try and take it out in the same place, we go to use the bathroom and, uh, yeah, testing. Uh, and just some, that will be, it's, uh, a lot of, some of the old, our chairs, back, calling off, which is just one of those things that happens sometimes. But I know that they can, so they start her, and then we put the old tech off, so it's obviously, it's just the, I think.
Like, certainly, or just a couple of hours, or, or.
No, once, I think, the, and that happens a lot of, of, I think, so, there's, 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 now, because there are a lot of, they, they, yeah. Yeah. Uh, I'll come to be smarter, and it's top side, which is, uh, it's where, I mean, it's all original and how the songs. Um, it's very, I was at the rehearsal today, and it sounded very good. Anyone in the, it's, it's not really, but anyone.
They must have recorded.
In that one, of the, of the, of the.
I'm gonna watch it, it's, I'll forget, and, um, the senior population, I don't know how much of our, our senior, like, elderly seniors, or, I know we're, you know, like, seniors, high school. But we've been talking about how we can, um, really include them, you know, lots of our outreach effort, um, just because they don't have a lot of representation in the community, but they're thirty percent of Maynard. And so we're really hoping, we, um, and we thought about this last, last night, um, that maybe we can somehow, if, I don't know, we can give, like, the student, I think, most email will write her, you know, to, to, we just maybe include her on some updates, I think that might be, um, she is the director for the council on H and for, uh, for the town. And she does newsletters and helps coordinate those things for the students, because they don't go on Facebook a lot, you know, they're kind of, yeah. But it's just one of those things, we're trying to be creative and, but I'll, at least, let them know that we do wanna, you know, like, there's so many events, we have like international night that maybe they might, uh, welcome and enjoy, so I just wanna maybe start thinking about that, or how we can, um, you know, nation of, anyway, I just.
Um, the A B has to start Monday, which is, I mean, the very next, for long, because that's, I like to find, so, obvious, two, 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 those tests, like, the whole day, I said, which could be stressful, but there's I'll think it's gonna get, like, dedicated, like, set up, it's like, like, make, like, feel, like, well, like, collaborate, absolutely. Uh, well, it's, which is, it's crazy how tough life, it was like just yesterday, I was having a first time there, and now it's also, because I'm there, mainly, but uh, so, I mean, there's, we, 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 uh, normally, the adults will be but, I mean, a lot of times, like, individually, like, around, there's also, like, they're
they're not like, oh, no, like, that school, sort of like, that, 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 you guys.
Not that I'm aware of, I, or.
Yeah. Definitely, yeah.
Normally, but, well, a lot of, that I'll, so I take, but, but, nothing. Um, the last thing is our, I mean, yeah, like, like, so, so, as, of course, they're, yes, here. And he's going in, I think, today, for back six days. You know, but, and, and, yeah, it's all us, like, the, that's, um, but yeah, hopefully, we have a plan, I, oh, that you're up above, well, definitely, it's like, fully, so, you know, like, make sure it brings out, like, her, yours. That's, I should, anyways, usually, like, being come involved with any, in like, obey, that's like a structure and like, they do, they're able, like, to come apart, in a way, obviously, but, but structure. And that's it for, if there's anything, I'll, I'll, I'll.
I will start, Hillary, do you have any questions or?
No, I actually could hear very, very few words. So, um, not enough to have any questions.
Okay, all right, it's great, um, Elizabeth, anything?
Um, no, I mean, I, I can look this up too, but you know, off the top of your head, when the senior showcase is at night.
I can, okay, I think it's, um, about the day, like, around eighteen.
I know it's coming up.
Yeah, he wants to see your projects, or everybody, yeah, at the, it's usually, it's right after that.
Yeah.
Right, right after them. It was here, yes, it's. Um, anything else? Have anything else for you?
No, good thing, Mary.
It's, uh, that's, that's a very, quite, so, so, hopefully, we have, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome, yeah, it'd be great.
And he might actually, but, um, and I don't actually, Brian, um, but thinking about the senior project, um, I know that sixth graders, they did their science project recently, and I don't know if it would be impossible to coordinate a time for the sixth graders to see the seniors in some, because they would think it's exciting around that, I just think, you did, but then, this is what you could be doing, you know, in their new schools. I, I just thought about it, it would, it talks about, but it comes the students can kind of leave around, I don't know, just the sixth grade class, they're all, um, whatever, my, I just thought it'd be a great idea to think about, and introduce them to senior projects, but they were just getting passing, you know, a great job of that, so. All right, thank you so much.
My dad just texted me, I, it was fine.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I know, you're gonna be here for like, a couple hours.
Bring it up.
How nice did I go?
Well, you're leaving, you're leaving.
Yes, yeah. Okay, all right. So, all right. Yeah. Yeah, but, yeah. Later. All right.
Okay, so we're not putting up the screens, just a couple of updates, uh, just so you know, flight incorporation, we had our first multilingual dinner presentation at school, and the, I say, the, the email department, led by Karen Murphy, supported by Charles LeBron, and all of the P L staff worked really hard to make sure the invites went out, and we had approximately seventy five people, families, it was wonderful. This year, we decided that we would, um, supply food, so they had pizza, salad, and fruit, uh, for dinner, and the kids got to play, so it was a full on family event. We also, it was an opportunity for the families to meet our parent liaison, Amelia, who did a fabulous job translating what I had to say into Spanish and Portuguese. Because that is not only for again, and he was just fabulous, and it definitely showed the value of a parent liaison, like, in facilitating those conversations. And in addition, the kids got to play, and then they got ice cream, while the parents were in the live, they're having presentations, or that was our first meeting, uh, in Elcat, which has been a struggle to get people here, who are sort of figuring out how to be there. Uh, and that was a great turnout, and it's sort of, that, a lot of us, sort of, the checkbox, that, if you think about it, we have it at a time when they become, they're not seeing more families, it needs to be a family event. Uh, so we provide, and we provided food, so the kids were taken care of, was taken care of, they were able to attend, and, and they can understand, we had some, really, we're getting better, was, you know. And it was really interesting in terms of the presentation, or it was what, uh, having struggled with, what would benefit from translating and having a translator, so they get the s'mores, which is translatable, they can give their grades, things like that. But, you know, things we might not have thought of, like the Aspen came up really high on, was with the new student information system, we need to do a better job, make sure that information's translated, and people know how to use it. So it was just, it was a great event, uh, very well attended, the staff did, and I'm, I'm, give them.
Yeah, so, can I just ask, did the audience tend to be the parents are together?
It was, no, it was, it was all, it was, but, it was, it was, it was just a bad, for like, you know, you don't, some, not, you just have no idea, everything clicked. People were so, um, creaser, of all, it's been, the students, of the school, some of them, and we've been, and other systems, were very complimentary to, to both. At times, we made a number of good friends, we had the first kind of unofficial meeting of our Elcat, which we're, which we're starting, and, uh, very, very fast, but it was, uh, the staff, the staff, the, that was, though.
So I understand that you had one, you know, after that, or?
Sure, and, and, the facts came into, uh, we explained what we wanted to do, several, um, teams, they didn't want to be part of it.
Yeah.
There were, then, you know, it, it ranged from people whose English was, you know, excellent to some that really struggled, but you know, uh, maybe it was, they had to translate, and they're very fortunate, it's, it's, they're very fortunate, so it was very, it's a break.
Yeah, no, I, I did that a little while, and I, I, I want to say, one second, that, it was magical, people were very happy. Um, and also, I like to do a survey, and I, and that.
Do for an update here and and appreciate your time. The development process has been going well. As you may expect, so just in in summary, just so that we're all remembering it the same way, there there are two specific. Uh can it, you know, solar projects that are are being developed here. One is the rooftop project, and then the other one is. Um, the canopy project over the visitors lot. And um, as you would probably imagine, the the development and the approval process for the roof. Is a little less complicated and been moving faster than the um development process for the canopy. Um, and as we've been advancing through it, there's um, and you you'll probably remember this from last time. But there are several different aspects to the project, including the incentives, including town approval. And then the procurement of the materials um. And the geotech um. And then the final pricing. So those are kind of the the big categories. In terms of the, and I'll just go go through them one at a time. In terms of the incentives. There is an incentive deadline for the projects to be completed. And that's in October, October sixteenth. And when um, we applied for the incentive, we actually. Were submitted or received the incentive from the previous project that predated select interaction with us. So. The um, as we're looking at it. The rooftop project falls well within that incentive. We we need to move quickly, but it it falls within that incentive timeline. The canopy piece, based on ordering the materials. Did not fall within that incentive timeline or deadline that the project needed to receive. Uh COC or completion, certificate of completion. And so we have refiled for that to give us additional time. So we we. Invested in resubmitting uh for the incentive um for that one, which. At this point, we have two two timelines. One timeline will be for. Uh, the rooftop project, and then the second timeline is going to be for the interconnection of the canopy. Um, based on past experience, when the rooftop. System comes online, we'll be able to start selling and providing the energy. To the high school behind the meter for that system. And then when the the canopy comes online, then that will just join um. Uh, be joined on as well, too. So it'd just be additional um power at that point. Going into a little bit more detail, um, and I won't, I promise I won't. Take up too much of your time, I I hope tonight, but um. The the next piece of it just has to do with the the uh, the approvals. Um, the rooftop approval, we did do structural, the structural engineer came out, looked at our plans, looked at the building, their measurements and the engineering. And and we can check that box. It was, it was fine. Um, so from a structural perspective. Uh, no issues there, and from a zoning issue, you know, perspective. All green lights. In terms of the canopy, um, we presented in front of the the um. The the planning board, um. Our, I should say, our environmental uh engineer presented our site plan to the planning board. And they had some additional questions. Um, and so. Um, that planning board meeting was on April twelfth. And I believe the next one is gonna be, you know, like, I think, May twelve, May tenth, May twelve. Um, and what they really wanted to hear, there was some questions about ADA accessibility. So there's, there's a small. Sidewalk that runs underneath where the canopy is. It doesn't go the full length of that area, but there's a section of that that would be underneath. And I think they just wanted to make sure that we had the provisions for the ADA sidewalk um. Included there, and then. The other piece was a, they said that um, it may require a and a butter notification. And um. And I think those were the big um. Those were the big pieces there and and possibly in terms of the lighting or how that would look for the for the abutters um. I don't, from from having visited the sites, I'm not. I mean, I think the primary butter is the high school. Um, so I, you know, and obviously there's the, there's the field there, so. I think we can look into that a little bit more before that planning board meeting, I think, uh, uh, having a a. Um, a conversation with. Um, Bill Messer and just confirming um, what they'd like to see and that, just so that we make sure that we're providing all the information they need for the approval process. So I think that's, that's the big piece there. Um. In terms of next steps, as we're finalizing the agreement, there will be um. You know, an update to um, when when we presented the uh, the LOI, there was a very specific, um, you know. Pricing for the the roof and canopy, which um, the school committee approved. And I, if and to the extent that that needs to be updated based on geotech um. And and canopy costs and footers and zoning input. Um, we would bring that back to you for confirmation and based on the timeline, um. It's, it's likely that it would be in the upcoming meeting or the following one, if if there's time on the agenda. Um, but we would just want to make sure that. Um, school committee has seen uh, everything and and blessed it as we as we continue forward here. Trying to think if there's anything else I had on my um. My list, um, we did the timing, the geotech and the incentives. So that's. Any questions that the that the group has?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I uh, I did have a couple of questions about, I think it would be helpful to get, you know. I mean, in our next meeting, we can figure when that might be for timing to get um approval. I'd be interested to. Hear more about the rebate or the the dollars. I don't know if we've gotten. Version of that, and it sounds like there may be changes. So I think that would be helpful for us to. To get in right ahead of time. Um, so we're.
Ahead of time, yes.
Yeah. Last information we saw, the blocks were, you know, there was changes, what we saw originally from the project, and I think, as you mentioned, you had to kind of go back in for. Um, the canopy part had to, you know, start over, so that would be helpful. Um. And then the butter conversation, I'm just curious, would that be like the Great Road residents? Yeah, yeah, but that was out, because I know that there are there are yards, it's like Tiger Drive, so I'm wondering if that that might be just for. Um, over, you know, conservative, that might be the most stuff, or is it that Field Street we're not talking about? Um, I'm just wondering, the neighbors, those are the only other residents I'd be wondering. Um, that are not school related, that we, there there is housing very close to. Um, the the parking lot and Tiger Drive, that, you know, maybe the plan, if we get clarification from the planning board.
Oh, that's interesting. Right, 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 okay.
That we would want to give. Yeah, rather than spinning spinning your wheels, maybe ask the planning board exactly what what.
They would have, the planning board would have specific criteria. Usually it's. Any property touching the property and sometimes even another circle out.
Right, that's.
So that's, yeah.
Byron is that I think in the summer, the planning board only meets once a month. I don't know if that's June, July and August, so the. The better you utilize the May meeting, the the better it's gonna be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, if if possible, and I, you know, I I um. Yes, if if, and and it may not need to be a lot of time, but but certainly. You know, in May, that would be great.
And then my um, other question was the the timeline for installation, since it is broken up now, can you clarify what that looks like as of now?
Yeah, so so for us, um, we would be expecting the installation on the rooftop project during the summer. And and the there's. You know, a couple of different components. So for the. The rooftop project, it's, there's, there's the aspect of it, which includes getting the mod- modules up onto the roof. And then, then there's the wiring of the modules themselves, you know. The construction of the racking and then the electrical piece. The electrical piece um. Is from a a school's perspective, very low impact. I mean, it's, it's the electricians literally walking on the roof, connecting the. The the modules and then and then running the conduits. Um. In terms of the actual placement of the modules onto the roof. Um, that may require a crane um, for a day or two, depending on um access. And so. We would certainly plan that far enough ahead with the with the school, and that would be expected to occur during the summer. Um, when the school was not in session. So that's. You know, we'd want to look at the calendar and see what time would be, would be best for the school. Um. But but that would take place ultimately during the summer.
I think that will be true, I think, the, I know there are some areas that are gonna be occupied over the summer, not full, but um. So that'll be just helpful to keep a close um. Contact with whatever we have, um, whatever we're reporting. You know, and and I don't know if power needs to be turned off, or whatever it is, just to make sure that parents or students are.
Yeah, we. Yeah, we we will have a full Gantt chart that we'll be sharing with the um, the administration well, well in advance, and then updating that through weekly updates. So they'll. There there will be um, plenty of advanced notice.
And then the canopy is, what was the timeline for the canopies?
The canopies um. Would be as as soon as we have the materials and go through zoning and everything, so so the materials themselves. Um, may take about twenty weeks to to have them on site. So there'll be the coordination, obviously, we would see it, we'd need to identify a staging area that would certainly be out of the way. Based on our understanding of the campus, there'd be plenty of areas for staging. Um, would want to identify when those are. And then, and then look ahead. So it would likely be. You know, broadly. Late autumn, winter, Q one next year would be the construction timeline, and I I am. Very aware that it is the visitor parking lot, and so we would need to be um. You know, if there's an opportunity to do it when the, when the school is less crowded, then that's certainly what we would aim for.
That's true. So I guess we'll just continue to monitor that as we get, you know, closer materials and planning. Um, did you say that there would be two? Contracts that we would need to approve because they first broken out? So would we be approving one regarding the roof first and then revisiting, or is it just both? Together and then um, just a timeline is different?
Yeah, our our preference would be. To have it all as one agreement, if possible, with two um. Per- two permission to operate intervals. So. A split permission to operate. So when typically you have an interconnection agreement with ever source, in this case. You receive permission to operate when the, when the project is complete, but given the fact that we'll have two different completion dates, um, and two different meters. We would ask for a split permission to operate. And so that's, that would be the plan, would be to to have that. So it's under, under one agreement.
Great. And my last question that I'll pass along to my colleagues here is, is there gonna be a dashboard in some sense where. Students would be able to, will that be starting like in the fall, the next, like the root? Um, that they can at least start seeing or, you know, how that, you know, how that impacts our school or whatever it might be.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, the the uh. The dashboard is pretty cool, like it 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 uh, updates, I think, on on either five or fifteen minute intervals. So you can literally see over the course of a day if a cloud comes over. The impact on production, or when it's sunny out, um, the impact on production, and it's. It's, it's neat, it's compelling, and there's also a little aspect there that that um, shows like the environmental. You know, benefits or carbon offset. So it's. It's a, it's a neat dashboard. It's, it's a good, good tool.
Thank you very much for for all of that information. I'm gonna pass on Hillary. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, um, thank you for coming back and updating us. Um, for the planning board piece, is that something you need or could use school committee support with when you go to that meeting, or? Is that something that we wouldn't have any idea what's being talked about anyway, so it's not worth it?
No, it's, um, well, thank you. So um. The the the. The answer is, I'm not sure. Um, the, in in the last, in the last version, um, you know, prior to the last meeting. We had a a a plan that we, we presented the the broad area for where the canopy would be, and and the school. Committee approved it, which was very helpful. We may need to go through something like that again for the next round, in which case we present it to to Brian, and and he could share it with the committee, or we could share it to the. Committee directly, but however you'd like to do it, but it's it's conceivable, but I'm I'm not certain.
Um, I was sort of, I sort of meant more like when you go to the planning board, would having one of us there? To like, um, be supportive or?
Or I think I.
Is it too technical that it's not a political thing?
Yeah, no, I mean, it didn't, it didn't sound, it. It may be helpful just to make sure that there's visibility from the committee to to the approval process. Um. That would, that would be welcomed. Um. It it sounded more like they just wanted to have some specific questions answered. Um. But but if there's impact to the actual lot or specific spaces, like um. Depending on the location of the footing, there may be one or two or or a couple of spaces that would either need to be adjusted or. Be for compact vehicles or whatever, in which case we'd certainly let you know, and then, you know, you could, you could weigh in on that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. No, thank you. You covered it all, thank you very much.
Mary, just um, really quick, and I think it's probably just to remind uh, Byron, from beginning to the end of the actual installation of the roofs, is it a one week project, is it a two week project?
I I would say, I would say, um. Allowing, allowing a couple of weeks for for the more significant um. Loading of the roof. You know, maybe two, three weeks for that. Then, then at that point, the construction will still be going. Um, maybe for another five weeks or six weeks, but it, but from. A visitor's perspective or a student perspective. Um, they they really wouldn't see, or it's not gonna impact the the school. It's just gonna be. You know, the the electricians up there just plugging things together and assembling it.
How about the same, the same scenario for the canopy?
No, the canopy um, would be. When we actually do the canopy, it's gonna be one mobilization that would include the foundations followed by the structure, and so there. Um, it's likely we actually fence off that area. I'm imagining that it could be. Hard, hard to know, it could be a few weeks, um, could be a month. Um, it depends on on our access and just making sure that it's uninterrupted and and the timing, but again, we'll be able to let you know. Um, pretty far ahead of time.
Thank you so much for, again, continuing to update us. It's great to be having these conversations, because it's been a while.
Well, thank you.
A quick question. So the question, what you said then is that, um, in the which I really expect that we'll lose private visitor parking for about a month? As that's kind of cordoned off, is that what you're saying, basically?
Possi- possibly. I mean, I, I haven't, I haven't run the Gantt chart myself, but based on other projects, I think it's, it's likely that if we can. Do all the staging and have everything there. Um. You know, it it could be three to four weeks. Um, and again, uh, when you get into the weather, some of it's weather, uh, winter, some of it's weather contingent as well, too. So. That's something we definitely. You know, be working with the the school to manage expectations, and. It's clearly the visitors lot. So I know, I know that there'd be some structure and organizing around that, for sure.
I'm upset. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Byron, I think that's, that's all we have. Thank you so much for the update, and I guess we will. Look to see when we can pencil you in for our, for the next meeting. It sounds like you'll need some approval for the May twelve meeting for us, is that right? Or is it after that?
Um, it would. It would likely be um, an update and some approvals for you um, or from you. And it, it may either be before or after the um, the planning board um, meeting, but it. I'll, I'll check with Brian in terms of, you know, the the agenda and when the next time is that we could be on there, but um. But that would be great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. That was awesome. Ryan, for you, are you still, you have any more options? Okay, so then. The MOU between the town and the school. Want to go ahead and.
So we met multiple times. Uh, me, Justin, Greg, and Barrow, and Justin, updating the maps. Sorry. Uh, we've met several times over the course of the year, um, including our facilities director and Wayne and. Justin, EPW, and Brett, for Tom, to take suggestions that you guys have had, and suggest that they've had, and run it through. Their legal, legal console, as well as our own legal consoles that come up with. So it's actually a bit of screen work. MOU, it covers all of the areas that we talked about, and one of the. Eeration, it's in there, and it's part of, and it's part of the process that they do. And they do, it's a diversity or ability based on. I think that's true. A lot of things in municipalities, um, so it is in there and. Expectation. Their ability, um, Bob, our facilities director, Mr. Boyd, was satisfied that it would be. Recording of what at the time does, and this wasn't a bad, from the Miami spread, but when we did that, there was a lot. First, if we were having school, and if we weren't having school. Um, due to the timing that allowed that second say. So he was, well, the MOU. Justin and Greg have reviewed it and. And I'll go back, so I wouldn't have that to say, but. Duty agents.
Yeah. And um. And just to kind of, for context, it's just a renewal to the three years.
Correct.
Um, renewal of what we, what we started, it's the first time in two thousand and nineteen, right? Two thousand and nineteen or twenty, no, twenty nineteen. And so then it expires, so. We had been talking about it, and I don't wanna speak a little bit more about just updates that you were doing with the map. Yeah, so um, basically. The maps were mostly the same. The only difference. That the changes were um, are, I feel, and it was mainly the, that they broke out in this first. In this second paragraph, the responsibilities of the parties, it explains. What the school department is in charge of. Green Meadow, Fowler, the high school, tennis courts, bleachers, basketball courts, track, overhead lighting, and the sheds. Um, and so we're, what I'm doing is, I'm, I'm breaking out all those pieces of, um, mainly the athletic, the alumni. Section, because all the rest of it were were fine. I just needed to make sure, because basically. The whole map only showed that we were, um, that we were in charge of. The, the sheds, the two sheds. So, um, breaking all that out, um, and then, um, and I just had. Had a couple of questions for you, Brian, to touch base on about the differences between the. Um, fall. Spring, summer, compared to winter. For that, so. And then that should be outside, and send it to. Get it attached. Yeah, I actually do have questions, too. Um. I'll go through. Um, Hillary, did you have any, any questions?
Um, not really. I kind of would have preferred this to have been talked about with the Fields Group before. Being like voted on with us. Um. But I don't have any big issues with it.
Um, Elizabeth?
Um, no, I second what Hillary said. Um, they have some, I don't really totally understand the wording of the line painting part, the very end, before notice, that part isn't. It doesn't quite hit for me, but um.
And and just to, we don't pass this tonight, because the current agreement is until June, it's just will. Need to be, um, we have a lot of time, but we vote, and then the Slum Board will have to move after, before. So it's really July first, right? Starts July first. Um, is there any expectation? Yeah, okay, right. And I wouldn't necessarily go comfortable, just because I'm not done yet. I would rather, and I'd rather that, you know, you all see everything. During that, if I forgot the answer today, to that from about one aspect that I was asked questioning. Um, and I still need to find this from from Brian on other aspects, so I, I don't want to vote tonight.
Okay, so you should say, you should have the uh, Fields Committee see this before we.
Next Wednesday, or Brian?
We do, yes.
Not necessary, but.
This isn't something I've done.
Just so that they know who's responsible for what, and it's because there is, that is part of the question that we made a committee for, when raised, is that they don't know who does what, if we take care of it. So just so that they're like, so we say this is what we had for three years, you know, just so you know, if there's something that strikes them as something that, you know, that we should know about, then they can tell before our meeting, right?
But the only, the only thing I agree, uh, is that both teams have signed up on this, so just thinking about what that.
Who signed up on it?
You don't, so Sarah was part of this, and then I know King better on the town, was part on the. The town side, so I would say if there's substantive to the changes, it would.
I think, I think it's more like, are there things that are interesting? Or is it reflecting something that's not happening, but that we think it is, because they know, might know more than we do?
They did look at people, and they did provide feedback. That was feedback that, like the eeration. That was actually based on feedback and that they provided, looking at the other agreement, so that.
Who provided? Who provided that feedback?
Um, the fields, I I know, I think it was Dan Ash, it was like early on in the fall, when that first came about, the conversation, it may have been even, or last year, when it first about, about the field and maintaining. Um, so they have insights, they looked at it at some point, and I think that's part of. What kind of got us to some of the feedback inspections on, I think, the bleacher or whatever that part, that was already kind of based on some of that feedback that. Taken. I don't know if they've seen the final version, but they have seen the older version, they did find feedback.
What's the risk of having them?
I think the only risk would be, um, is it would delay possibly our ability to vote on it before the current one expires, because, because we've got a meeting next Wednesday. But if there's changes, they would have to go back to Sarah, they'd have to go back to me, there's like that. Because they want to make sure it's legal, so it's a degree, many differences between two different, like, town. Party agreements, they want to make sure the wording.
It's not that I, I don't think that they're gonna have big changes, but I feel like when the fields have, when people were unhappy, and. That caused the creation of the field task force, and then it sort of fizzled away. And they wanted to have involvement and have input, and then it sort of seems like, like this was a surprise to me, like that, like the, so, a lot of things in this were a surprise to me. And so I feel like it could also be a surprise to other folks on the fields task force. And so we're sort of going back on the idea of involving them and including them, and so. I don't necessarily think they're gonna have an issue with it, but I want to make sure that we're sort of standing by what we said. A year ago, when we said we were gonna include them and get input.
Yeah, I think, I think that if you, if some, whoever's there walks through with this means, that's, that what we, that's the spirit we made some. And then if they say, actually, instead of this, but what we see is this, then we can know that we've been having papers, not as that's happening. And that would be good to us, and then we go ship them. Right?
So maybe, uh, because I know this is not all fields stuff, there are a lot of it's like the, uh. The, uh, like the sidewalks, sidewalks, right? So maybe it might be a better approach to. Pull out the areas that are. So maybe it might be a better approach to pull out the areas that are specific to fields. And then, you know, so it's not like the daunting, you know, every aspect of the document, just during this section, this section. I don't know that.
I said, we have a meeting next week.
Yeah, just like highlight these are the areas.
I think they can skim through and pick out the pieces they care about, like.
Size of making sure that they have viewed it and everyone's, you know, it's comfortable that we are revisiting it. We're trying to address the feedback and I think that's.
So I do have a question. Yes, I had a question and it speaks to this because like for instance, PJ's field and the key. Is that part of the athletic field or will that?
That's going to be a separate. Facetments shouldn't.
And that's something that isn't excluding because they are athletic communities. And so I'm thinking that that would be a place to put this.
To get on the map.
On the map, it says that it's separate. Yes.
It says they don't, like, no, it's fine. It has, I'm really talking here, the appendix, but it has highlighted color coded on.
Here, those are you and. So it's not, it's not part of school. If some, we're not here in three years or two years and, and it's like, okay, so what happens? So where is it ordered that those are? It's on the map. Where does it say what that means that they're?
So are you thinking that each act which is separate agreements is that, or just even an asterisk that, you know.
Something on the map doesn't even have to be on this, but just those are the two anomalies. But that's how it should be referenced. Because they have ones that just come up.
I can, I can put that on there.
Do you think on the map?
Either or. It's, if this has to be back to legal because of that, then I'd say put it in the map. It's on the, the, the contract doesn't, it says what it's specifically. And so it does talk about the field next to the metal like there. So I would say, yes. Yeah. Yes. So you look at responsible, responsibility of parties. Maintain, so that's the possible main tennis court leader, like, right? So it's, it also includes exterior non athletic fields. So it talks about what the department is non athletic fields. Not a voting way. And then for the. GPW. Where is it?
Just reference those two.
Oh, this is mean, it says all athletic fields including.
Just being easy things to.
Yes, including the playground next to adjacent, as shown in the appendix S. It refers to appendix S. But I think your point is that we just. I just. Something specific about those two fields. It's just a little different. Tomorrow. There anything else? No, I know it's it. And tomorrow. Okay. Right. Yeah, and so it sounds like we will. Revisit there is separate. Works right then in the school. Right, are those going to be discussed next week? Touching it or after? I mean, could start. All right, so we will not go on this and. Circle back at. The committee. Moving on. Our. MOU between the schools and the. And. I think this one, I sent an email to them because they get clarification that it was substantive. That is the state and. Right, okay. The more of which they will.
So two years ago, they changed the. Schools and that place. So the twenty twenty two one and the twenty twenty two one are basically the same.
Okay.
And so we have a very different. In labor and in say district or in say Pittsburgh. A bigger city, if you will, or Boston, that matter, or fall. You know, our MOU and we are, SRO operates is probably more similar to a sub area. If they can strongly top that's of their size and how they operate. So they're more of a support role. We're not having separate meetings. Where they're coming to listen to that they. They're a support role. They clearly are forming relationships in families and they're part of the RAN services. And that the social part. So it began with literally like saying. Satisfied the MOU and more the, and when you have to deal with the training that somebody who wants to be a school resource officer has to continuously vote. And so we're fortunate, the town is fortunate that we have someone who wants to be a business officer, wants to have a. Social motion dog. So not only do we have a person who's, as I was saying, supporting students, but they also bring Otis along to support kids as well. Otis is not in that.
It's a bet. I will. Hillary, did you have questions or?
Yeah, my question is just because it was hard to hear. Natasha, you say this is significantly different than last year's. And then Brian, were you saying it's not significantly different than last year's? It's that last year's was significantly different than the year before?
Miss go, so Brian.
Okay.
I understood it was one of the years significantly, but I, this one, I think it sounds like it was the same as last year. But the last year's was the one that was significantly different than the year.
Okay, so I wasn't noticing huge changes, so I was afraid I was missing things, but, okay. Um. I'm okay with it. Um, I think there's always like, it could be nice for us to sort of tweak it with taking Maynard's unique situation and way of using the school resource officer into consideration. And really customize it, but. Um, I don't think we necessarily have the time and the energy to do it right this minute. And if we want to get it signed, that works too. And we're consistent with the recommendations elsewhere. Um. And I think we have a fabulous school resource officer who is doing a great job and is great with the kids. Um, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mary?
So I just down, we had a request that, because I remember when the box that you two so was here, that she would come in and, and tell us how, how great thing, you know, what they're doing. Sure, in the classroom and that's what we get a presentation with Otis. But yeah, it'd be really, really great to see, you know. What her day to day is, because I think it's wonderful. And really, we should be grateful that the police department pays for her salary to. Not on us, but it's a good benefit, so.
I was going to think about maybe like the beginning of the year or something early. I think because I kind of set the tone absolutely. Yeah. Be nice to see those. Yeah, no, but I do, I think they, I remember when, when she, when buying, it was really, it was really great. It was great to hear. Yeah. And to hear how much time she spends in each one of schools to, you know, to. It was also like a lot of the things were coordinated with them. There was that new, like some presentations. Yeah. Yeah. It was just a lot of things. And I know. The story of justice, so is she involved in that, you know, that kind of stuff? So. Yeah. Thank you, Mary. I, I don't have anything either. I, I appreciate the work and discuss that. This is. Seems like it's been. It seems like it's.
It's supposed to be annual.
Right, it's kind of there. Okay. So do we, do we feel comfortable voting on this this evening? Yes, is that, okay. So. With my. Here, I will. Get on. Schools and, and police department. To normalize the background, invitation of the partnership between the school district, school resource officer, and the police department for the twenty three, twenty four school year. And for the discussion. Just, I, we are very loved, loved out. We're having fantastic school resource officers this past couple of years and so. One of them more so that I can, I think. So I just, I'm very happy, you know, we hit the SR jackpot. And so I am excited that we don't actually have all of those challenges that we've seen other districts. And the community actually is well, I think, for our community. So on that note, I will. Do roll call it during Griffiths?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Bradley, yes. Yeah, Natasha Vera, yes. Ocean Paris, right, so. Thank you very much. Oh, budget. Oh, no, we're going to actually, next item, I think. For the executive session, so we will not be discussing. School department and by before budget. I think I've seen this from our hearing already and I, one of persons, make sure, I'm going to, Hillary, you do it tomorrow. I know that you, well, you were here at the hearing, right? So, oh, you were not, it was you and. You two weren't here. So, so I want to go to YouTube first to, for the questions that. I know they, video, whatever, but just the conversations that can pop in. You know, hopefully kind of open it up for everyone else who maybe. Were here for your.
No, I'm. Right now.
Brian, you don't have anything in particular to just present? It's just about what we saw, but you're right, right?
So I think it's better. They opened the full control. Additional. Supporting. Hello, sales budget.
Just to, I know add. Or to everything, which is kind of ancillary. Got communication this week about. Budget article, which is not, as well, it's kind of tied to this, but there might be some revision there. But are we proceeding? I think our plan was that we would be voting the service dollar amount and recommending that. Is that what everyone still is comfortable with? Yes. All right. All right, you're so with that. Thank you. Hillary? Yeah. Okay. Elizabeth? Yeah, okay. Mary? Yep. Mara, that's under to you. Okay. All right, so there. I will go ahead and. Make a motion that. I will make a motion to approve the FY. Oh, yes. FY twenty four budget allocation of. Twenty two million, seven hundred and thirty five thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars into. Okay.
This is how we voted last year.
Yeah. Yeah. Presentations. Yeah, that's what I. No, 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 we had, we actually had the breakdown of the different cost insurers.
It's in your.
Sorry. Okay. All right, let me think of mine. So I will start again. I will move to approve the FY twenty four budget allocation of twenty two million, seven hundred and three five thousand, five hundred and seventy seven dollars. Into cost center as allocated for one, cost center one thousand. For, yes, nine hundred and two thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars, thirty seven cents. Two thousand. Million, four hundred and fifty eight thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. Cost center three thousand for one million, four hundred and forty four thousand, one hundred and four dollars. And for cost center, four thousand for one million, nine hundred and one thousand dollars, four hundred and forty six dollars. And cost center, five thousand for thirty thousand dollars. Center, nine thousand for one million, nine hundred and twenty eight. Thousand, five hundred and seventy eight dollars. I think that's for the total of again, twenty two million, seven hundred and forty five thousand, five hundred and seventy seven. Okay. All right, I think I said it right. Any further discussion? Brian, thank you very much. You were all in charge and charged for everything behind the scenes and coming. For, you know, all the work. I know we're not done yet, Brian. You know, for the top, thanks for everything, getting us. Yes.
So I did watch the video.
Okay.
And I was shocked that there was, that there were no comments. No. Yeah, I could not believe it. There is like, I just. Now, considering all that we're trying to do, I was really hopeful that more people would come out and. Either support or not support. So that was very disappointing for my.
I think it's, and I know it's, it's every year. I want to say we, I think we, why we, whether they're, you know, a question, she comes, she like asks three questions. They don't know if everyone really understands how it, the direct impact into the school year when they start doing, you know, it implemented, which is kind of, you know. A little bit backwards, right? Because then we want to. And give the feedback before we're like ending here. But I do, I do that because it was, yeah. Well, I mean, considering, you know, this is basically.
Third year as a school member and, you know, coming to, to school committees. Meetings before I was a member, there were people that would come out. You know, we used to have those meetings in auditorium because there were so many people that they would face. So, and so to go from, you know, having that kind of. Input and feedback to nothing was, I just, maybe it's a confidence. Maybe people have more confidence in the discussions that we're talking.
I was just going to say that. I think that part of that is probably that Brian has such a calm and confident demeanor that they don't feel like they need to. Watch everything and give input.
Even what we put out and more during the years. I mean, the information is out there during the year online. She doesn't feel like it's like this one time and then get it. I don't know. But I, I, I do wish, it's a lot of work to put a public hearing on, so I do wish we could get some, some questions. Yeah, you know, to help make sure everyone understands the decisions behind it. So. All right, any other discussion? I have a motion second, so roll call everybody, Griffiths?
Yes.
Both the top voter?
Yes.
Mary Brownlee? Yes. Mara, yes. Natasha Vera? Yes, I think, I don't know if I voted you guys twice and I just stopped, but anyway, I voted, I voted by some. I don't know if it was a discussion you started asking, okay? It was like voting.
Getting.
Yes.
Just number right now.
Well.
Our five hundred thousand dollars shy. Ben.
So there's a couple, because I actually wanted to clear, because I, I've been asked this question a couple of times. So I know level service is this dollar that we just quoted. But we also have a strong feel or belief that the circuit breaker shouldn't return in that amount. Which is would be above the level service. And so I know that maybe discussions have not landed that way consistently or felt that they're being consistently heard. But that is the position, I think, the school committee, and I wanted to clarify that for everyone else, that level service is why school committee is very adamant that we should have minimum funding. The circuit breaker is a separate act that also feels should be returned to support the needs of what that money is. reimbursing what Larry spent, so. And just to also recap, FINCOM did not. Voting not to recommend a free cash compensation that did not give it back to the school. So there is, um, potential that we may, um, get invited for that, some, in some capacity where that, that, that amount might be returned. So, anyway, order comp by, see how the town, yes.
So we have to do some educating, tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't just get the out of open, you know.
No, um.
We need to spend some time on what we're gonna say and it'll help if anyone, you know, at their vote, but. Like, to the point that not everybody understands the, the, the groundwork. They just understand if there's cuts and that's gonna mean that they're, yes.
Okay, I'm great to talk.
So how, so I guess the question is, how are we going to work together to, to get that message across?
Um, so I think the. Well, uh, I think, I was asked if the school committee would withdraw that, I said no, I would not, because that's where we keep, we bring it up and I ask the same, is no, we would not. Now this is, this is the word. Um, so I think it's a matter of educating, you know, this is what causes this, how much they're rising, like looking at the presentation that, you know, it's been created already. And just taking that snapshot of like, this is what, um, level service we've asked for, and then this is what we, you know, again, and, you know, just that compounding, um, impact. Um, and then just clarifying, you know, the, the budget drivers, I think that also was in the piece that we highlighted a bit more, because people, there was a misconception. That we're asking for, wanting to hire more people, and that's not it. It was just to fund what we already, we're already do, it's not that we're looking to hire more, but we, we wanted to hire more. That's not part of the level service for us. So I think highlighting those, those budget drivers that we're, we're seeing, which, you know, Brian, I'm indicative of putting that more in front of, uh. The conversation of like, uh, special education, uh, technology, all of those things, transportation, until at least that needs to be at the forefront. FinCom is gonna be doing, they have a public hearing for that, for the budget, um, which they, they, I think it's, uh, they should get right before, like, they're up to the wire. Um, and how we, I'll be going there to, to listen, and they'll be finding their final recommendations on their, um, on the final articles. Actually, the, the budget article did not pass unanimously either, I think, for the recommendations, which is very, yeah, that's, I've heard of, um, the manner that it's playing. So, I think for our next steps, um, you know, I would say we can, we need to adapt on that, get the message.
Minimum slides, but right away with the presentation.
I think we can look at the last updated presentation, um, so calling, I don't know, uh, we have the, I guess, the presentation or the Google site or whatever. We get a updated version, we can kind of see how the school committee wants to, you know, chop it down to improve. We have, I think we have to print it and put it in, I don't know, handout, right? Isn't that what we've done in the past? And we just hand it out at, as people arrive, I tell them, we think it's available. Package them. So I think that's really the next step, and then, and, uh, we will provide whatever slides we find to, uh, brag, so then they will have a point of overhead presentation and. Speak to it in some way, um, and Brian. Monday. Yes.
We can get, yeah.
Yes.
Zero.
Yes, yes. And then we will also need to make sure we have babysitters, uh, at least they do. Uh, no, we, uh. School, we're, I just hope we ask.
Well, they, I've been going to, she had a baby or.
Oh, I thought, uh, I thought so.
It was something.
They have some for, uh, um, that's what she initially, when I asked for the, for the, which you mentioned.
Wait, what are you guys saying?
Babysitters.
Yeah, I wanna hear about that, so.
Maybe I came in after I found you, though. The one I saw today didn't have any table.
This was like four weeks ago that, um, yeah.
I think it has to do with what Liam said, they are just straight up.
They are straight up.
So you're saying there isn't babysitting at, at town meeting?
It felt like they have volunteers who have stepped forward, um, but they're working on it.
Can you, can someone just say like the whole sentence clearly, because I'm hearing like a couple of words here and there and not enough to know what you're actually saying.
They are working on getting high schools to do it, you know, they do not have any as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
Um, APs are done by then, so they should be set.
Right, so, order comp.
So we're having a workshop that, we're gonna have a little workshop for him.
I don't know if we will have a workshop, we can, I know we have a budget, so maybe next week, so maybe I, some of those, uh, things, simple.
Yeah, I didn't hear you say this, this time, but I think they, I think it was effective that, you know, like, level service is still a loss.
Yes.
Because we are not quite that assertive and that admins are very creative, but figuring out ways to still do, you know, the data and making sure the kids are even needs that. But it is still a loss. They're not having much service today for things that I liked. And I also think that most people, if they are talking about this, the circuit breaker and read that, the, the, they actually don't, that's not, those are, it took me a while, I'm sure. And the labor scene comes into this position, so imagine that, these people have, understand that that.
Yeah, I think the circuit breaker has to be explained, because I don't think, I've heard people think, okay, and it's like a savings account, but really, it's not. To reimburse from expenses already occur and it's, yeah, so I, I did have, I've had that, so I think that's a good point to highlight. So it's really to offset all expenses we've already.
I think you did a great job.
Yeah.
Speaking of highlighting that.
Yes, so, alright, I think that's good. Thank you, um, for that conversation and I. Leader's report. Oh, chair report. Um, I'm just trying to keep it, um, very tall about the, uh. The, the science thing that was really great, and also I just wanted to, that's of the paving, the, that's a road. Yeah, uh, parking lot, and, yeah, fantastic that we had some, almost forgot how it could be a drive, drive. But, so just thank you for, made that happen, to be done, you're coming to get it done. It was really great to get those pulled in. Um, and I also just, I alluded to this earlier by, by the Slough Board having me on Tuesday that talked about benefits. And they were addressing, there were discussions on it, and I just, for context, this, Mary and I are on the town budgets of committee meetings. And this has not been brought forward as a matter that was imminent to decisive action that would be happening. So I think we're, um, equally, I don't think clear on the nature, this expeditious nature that. He did, um, and there were schools, revenue representation at the Slough Board meeting, being comments. And one of, one of the comments, a couple of comments that were made, which I was very concerned about, was that they felt that the town was bargaining not with the, regarding. That, and I think that's something that would be, um, you know, it's, it's serious, and I wanna make sure that our, feel that in, in town representation, or maybe the school, the town. That would make every effort to bargain, and it could be, I believe it was just the nature of information was provided to them. Just last week, there was April vacation, if they had a week to decide, whether it's just getting to sign, so, um. Possibly, you know, in the future, but I just wanna make sure that the, we'll open eye on those conversations, Mary, I guess we might have to ask through the next year more explicitly. Uh, because I, I do not like hearing that we were kind of like told after, oh, by the way, there's this important vote's gonna happen, it's gonna affect all of your employees and.
You just say that nothing's gonna happen.
Uh, the way it was, uh, started, uh, the Slough Board said that they would not proceed with anything unless the, um, insurance advisory committee voted in favor of it. But every representative that could forward, and they did, they said that they, they're represented to, they would not have done that, and they would like to stay for one year.
And open starts Monday.
Yeah, oh. Well, that was exactly the term, I can't, I, I would feel the same way, you know, I mean, it's, that's, that's a decision you make in a, in town for your family. So I, I, I understand and I appreciate the feedback that people share, um, especially when there is insurance, that, that task force.
It doesn't make it, it was even surprise to them.
Yes, so, just doesn't, yeah. And I, I said on the timeline, they're gonna renew something, but it is something, they tend to, that it's conversations, it, it needs to be something that allow people to process. Over months at a time, because it does have a very personal impact, revealing what it's talking, so, um, anyway. Order comp possibly in the future, but doesn't seem like I heard that they would. And I think, uh, just the, the thought, I could be too, uh, outreach efforts. So I don't know, uh, about Hillary, I don't know if we have any updates, um, for outreach.
Um, I don't have updates. I was just looking at the, um, spreadsheet, and I think I could do the high school PTO one on May seventeenth. Um, I'd kind of like it if someone did it with me, though, because I get nervous about things, but.
Um. I think with the Boys and Girls Club that I know that you had, you were, were we gonna try to do something like after or table or where that would land?
They're open to anything we want, basically.
Okay. Okay, um, so I guess we'll figure out the scheduling for when, to the part, but if, I don't know if you have any suggestions for what to do, like something to propose for the Boys and Girls Club, if they're thinking for a date?
Um, it seemed like personally, like doing it when it's nice out is good, because, um, they're willing to do it indoors, but, um, it gets a little bit complicated in terms of having a space that. It's security, they're very careful about security, so having people in, in the indoor space could be a little bit complicated, so doing it when it's nice is better. Um, and preferably around pickup, probably, for our benefit, is when the parents are present. Um, but they're just happy to help us however we want.
Right, alright, so we'll connect more on that, like timing and, um, scheduling that, Elizabeth, uh, do you have, I mean, you were.
Yeah, so Mary and I went to Fowler, um, after school, uh, one day last weekend, it was Thursday last week, uh, to meet with the teachers. Um, and just be available here in the library, in case anyone wants to come by, um, so did have the teachers come by.
Yeah, no, we, they had to bring feedback, I actually had three, one came in, twenty, and just thanked us for being, yes, like a ride here, like that, it's never happened, so. Um, so it was, it was great, it was, uh, yeah, it was, it was great notes, yes, yeah, but, um.
I'm sure. Um, yes, and we spoke to a few teachers, we spoke to, um, Ellen Lewis, um, it was nice to be up to, um, their, I think it was the name.
Erin?
Yes, thank you, Erin.
Was there anything like particular views that were most interesting or just curious? I'm just wondering how much, like, information that they would like to understand about that we could think about going into the next year?
Um, I think it was, one thing, you know, as always, I think, like, they want to help us. I know, and I think that they were sad also that they're, so far, so that kids can have homework by after school.
Thanks.
Um, and so that, that was something that they want to mention, um, you know, they talked about how, how much they, how much they benefit from the NTS. Um, stuff they need to do with that professor, and how their, I'm, I'm understanding it's gonna change next year, and that they know that it's going to be okay, but not what they wish you. Uh, let's see. They're hoping they were, they advocated for a bus drive, potentially, um, for case, um, potentially, they, they, one person mentioned that they are, they're like, they're done, as many posts at home. Um, so maybe the, we could give the post invite to the schools and then kind of give, give those to, and what looks to be. I'm, um, yeah, that was a lot of it. Um, we talked about the bitter, just, you know, part of the reason I ended up going there. Um, and our, you know, and that we have an increased, like, population of, our students, like, students are the ones who come from other countries and have, um, had traumatic experiences behind them. And often have missed years of school, um, so we have an increased, obviously, you know, just the costumes of students, and that, we mentioned, or meeting areas. Um, that was, Karen, we've mentioned that some of them have the program for some students that would be pretty poor with things.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, it is.
So, but, but. Stop.
That's how I am.
It's one of the, one of the, we, 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 we.
Yeah, and some extent around, of course, we know that, so.
Mary, you wanna?
Yeah, and so Natasha and I went to, uh, with the senior. And all fifty-two people, which was really great to stay last, it was, so I reflected and also, of course, myself, but anyway, um, and it was, uh. It was, it was, you know, yeah, it was a difficult conversation, um, you know, what we talked, um, we would ask, we know about their needs, of course, they feel like they're not represented at all. Um, even though there's thirty percent of senior population that are there, um, and really, they're just trying to get a senior center. Uh, they do have, you know, interim space right now that was just intended to be interim space, while something long-term is gonna happen, and it's sort of landed there. Uh, they were just asking us for our support and whatever way we, we can, and then we, you know, talked, um, about the elementary school and, uh, the costs to, to the senior population, um. And that, and Ellen, Doug, and, um, I was giving her a lot of credit, but she, um, she reached out to, uh, Ray Johnson, the town administrator, to see if there's some way we could put together. A list of different ways that seniors on fixed incomes can get benefits to lessen the burden of the elementary school. They. Are pleased for the fact that we, um, any elementary schools, just the, the dollar, which, you know.
And I, um, I know, hearing their feedback, and I asked Ron, and I think it sounds like the, the principals were really receptive to possibly having some type of interim space. That might, over the summer, so can be availability, and obviously, grouping, whatever that happens, um, so I am going to, we're back to. Of us, to see if she, you know, that's an opportunity, and then support, um, you know, what we have, and some, you, you know, just. There's, she's, were they like the checking, kind of the building, no security, and that, it's not, they were, they were, they were remembering, and a couple of people afterward, like, oh, God, we never had to, like, do or each acts years ago. You know, they used to have commander. Yeah, for each of the students, a lot, they just, all of those things, you know, after, but those are things that just are so different from their experience before in school to what now has to be bettered. But there wasn't a lot of, um, desire to incorporate, um, engage in some way with elementary. Teach you wrong, you know? So, like, it's all about education, and maybe you have a fair, a lot of questions.
We know, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Who's involved?
Junior seniors, and so, uh, treated, they have the same, we have some junior seniors, and I, and I, I came to learn that a junior senior is probably someone maybe in the sixty-seven. And then, and they kind of, or, right, right. I'm not, like. Formed, I'm sorry. Yeah, anyway, so it was some opportunities there, I think we know, loved it, we're, we're also grateful that we, yeah, we're there, so. A lot of good questions, and I think, you know, well, I think we love it open, it's for, welcome to come back, I mean, point, and the major, it would be great for them to come and see what's going to happen. So, and then I did go, it was past Monday, to, broke the script for a little bit before, I went to, uh, FinCom, and I, that was at town hall. I met a couple of them, some, some of the same, some worrying, and they were discussing, you know, the situation and what they would like to do, and they are talking about. Maybe getting information, those from the town website, the C O A, but see, they're linked, so they, they have all this information going out, but it's not, they don't have a central repository. Because they don't have representation, you know, as much like as a state representative or a town representative aside, just, so, uh, anyway, we're just, we talked, so.
Just made me think of something, I know sometimes, different, often people don't like to come out at midnight, I wonder if you can, um, could be. Day or something. You know, lots of seniors don't like to come out at night.
you know, lots of seniors don't like to come in, that's very, very great.
Yeah, well, I think that's great. I think we have lots of opportunities, a little substantial call.
It might even be just again, Ron and and Charles, like you're like, you're the superintendent and it just being a senior center or, you know, on a summer, for a day.
Green Meadow.
Yeah, or
that way they can tour and that kind of things.
That popularity that must bring you. Yeah. They, they, they do, so I should go in that, if you go where they
So, and then we bring it back here.
Yes, so so I think that, and some people on this line, I think a daytime thing would be really some of them did say that they don't drive, I think I'm on a drive.
Is it going to back to the hospital, there's some way we do send them before we invite them to the first thing?
Um, so I, yeah, we could be about one, if the school maybe to add your um the, so this, your, any of the people who are starting to start that comes out, so just to kind of put the education off, I know they've done a really great job of talking to the and so whatever way that we can create they are, that's
Between cone and that wall.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe even if it's like a email tomorrow, sorry, that we're just like, hi, we're adding these for our lists, so you'll be getting information from us. Also, there's a possibility, you know, I didn't want that, you know, we do times.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah. Right, um, that's all I have, I guess, my things are reached tomorrow, yeah, well, I I went to the Fowler's here um last month and I must have missed, oh, I missed the the next one right after that, so um so that was really, we met here and um they went through their new focus list of fundraising. They are doing so many things. I was just like, oh my God, this, so um it was pretty amazing, so they were, you know, planning out everything, like who was doing what. Um, you know, each raiser and um and they, you know, they have raised, I think they've actually raised so much money more than, and you know, any previous year, which is fantastic. I guess there's a um, a PTO fundraising Facebook page uh group, so that they, they got on there and got fantastic ideas for some of the stuff they did this year. We don't try to settle something with uh with the Green Meadow and High School, I know it's you and I um, for the outreach. Yeah, but for the, for the for the staff, yeah, 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 okay. I think those are the other two that are left and then then we will kind of get over other than, other than the PTOs, we have Green Meadow and High School PTOs.
When I hit first, did we decide to split the PTOs up, or did I set a brand?
I think you can sign up for for anything, at this point, I feel like anybody
Okay.
Anything that anybody can do, um, I had originally thought that I would try and go to the high school um PTO one lap, but it was last night, so I mean, we're in our meetings, so, you know, that was, I think, again, so I think I'll now I want to make sure the faculty that we get, yeah, touch their shares. All right. I think it's all for the outreach updates that we've worked for now, um I'll talk to me, of course, um or, oh, Hillary, sorry, sorry, did you have any, any uh subcommittee dates?
Um, not really, we're, uh, I don't think that either of my subcommittees have met since our last meeting. Um, we're working on scheduling in the next few weeks. Um, the only other thing I wanted to say is, I was thinking when someone mentioned it a few minutes ago about um, a workshop in preparation for a town meeting, and I kind of think that could be a good idea. Um, to talk about how to advocate because I think it is such an unheard of thing. Um, an unexpected thing for a mainard that, um we should probably do some legwork before town meeting to draw people into town meeting and to educate ahead of time because I think that
It's gonna do something offline and if that's the majority of everyone's feeling, um, yeah, we can be, we can do that, and that would just be the school to do that, so.
I can't hear you, but
Oh, I said, schedule something, we can coordinate something um offline to to see if we can find a time that will work for everybody.
Okay.
Is there updates that you have of the DEI, you guys are meeting, and the policy um tomorrow?
Policy, um, I think we're going to meet on the ninth.
Okay.
And um DEI, I'm not sure at this point.
Elizabeth?
Um, yeah, sorry, before I move on from it, so I've signed up for one of these um GM uh PTO meetings, it's hybrid, make sure I get invited to that. Before, where is it? It's hybrid, where is the meetings?
I think you just can reach out to the agreement, I think, Mark, that we can bring each other to the roughly, yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, he's in charge of the
What I did was I just went on the website, um, and there's a contact like, you know, like if we info or whatever for the the Green Meadow PTO, um, the high school one
Is in the high school, everything. Um, yeah, so um, we are right now figuring out our PES committee, of course, I mentioned I went to the dinner for the the I went to the track meet recently, it was awesome, saw stuff I knew about, um, uh, great, great energy from the team, um, and uh, yeah, there's, there's not much else to report.
Great. Like you said, next week, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, but yeah. Budget, budget. Tomorrow, um, we have personnel Thursday. It's a track meet again today, I think that there's one Saturday. And there's the flower on Friday night. Next Friday is the spring fling that I'm in tenth graders uh dance. Well, Friday is from I just want to thank all the colleagues in all the committees for talking, I'm not a budget, but there's been a lot of conversation, discussion, deliberation. We were, I know a lot of people have looked at a lot of information and have brought forth some conversations, or so this year, the next, and another year, so I I just hope that that can continue on, that just given the attention that it and we really should be brothers can be as uh, as we're doing, so just thank you very that's all I have, I could just be moving on to the
Hold on, one second.
Look, I knew last
I didn't see, excuse me, I didn't see any minutes.
Oh, I remember.
No, I think it's and I want to say is it fifty four? Fifty seven? I think that we five was the one that we did in person. And that one off, I had the last meeting, so I think it was
True.
Four, six, seven, the last one, seven, so I fifty eight, fifty nine, like, right, which is four. That's how
That sounds correct.
That, so, I would touch her seven, or it's two, three, zero, five, four, two, three, zero, five, six, two, three, zero, and seven. All right. Seven, two, three, minutes, so that second or call who? Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Elizabeth Almora?
Yes.
Mike Ramley?
Yes.
Carholmen? Tasha Barrett? Yes, all right, thank you all very much, thank you, thank you.